Good evening, everybody. I am Tony Felker, President and CEO of the Frisco Chamber of Commerce. We are so glad that you are able to join us today on our day one of two days of candidate forums because it is election time. Hasn't been that long, so we want to continue having elections. We apologize we're running a little bit late in getting started, but don't worry, we're not going to keep you delayed longer at the back end. So, we're just trying to make everything as concise as possible for you. Just a reminder, hopefully, everybody is registered at this point in time. If you have not registered yet, unfortunately, it's going to be too late for this election, but we do encourage you to get registered for future ones. The election date itself starts on May, is May 1st, and then early voting starts on April 19th. So, those are the big days that you want to know. Tonight, we're covering Collin College Board of Trustees and FISD Board of Trustees, and tomorrow, we will have the two city council races. So, with that, I'm going to introduce our moderators for tonight. We have with us our past Chair, Ms. Crystal Howard, DFW Publisher for Community Impact Newspaper. And joining her, since apparently I have been fired from this role from past years, we have Christopher Lee, our Director of Governmental Affairs. So, with that, we thank you for being here, and we're going to get this show on the road.
I think we should start with the hard questions. Was Tony fired from the forum?
So, that is a hard question, but no, he was not fired. He was relieved of his duties, I think was the way to do it. Yes, he did a great job, but they kept me around for at least a year here in this new role at the chamber. So, I figured now's the time for me to take the reins and have him sit on the sidelines for a little bit. So, we'll see how this goes.
Good, well, you know, I'm teasing you. I'm really looking forward to this tonight. This should be fun.
Well, we'll go ahead and just dive in. We've got two candidates with us this evening with Collin College, place seven. We have Jim Orr, and he's going to be our only candidate from place seven here this evening. And then in place, I mixed up my numbers, which place?
In place eight.
Place eight, we've got Bob Collins with us this evening as well. They'll give us, because they are our only candidates here this evening, they've had three minutes for the floor to speak to their platform. You can share with us whatever you'd like for three minutes. We have a timer over here. She'll wave the red card when you've got 30 seconds left. And then, once those candidates are done, we'll go ahead and transition over to our place nine. And we will have Andy Harden and Jacoby Stewart join us after that as well. So, do you want to cover any other?
Yeah, and we'll talk about format, I think, once we get to the races with multiple candidates. But to get moving, I think, Mr. Orr, if you wouldn't mind kicking it off with your three minutes, we'll start the clock.
Perfect, thank you very much. So, about myself a bit, I'm going to talk about myself, about the initiatives of the college, and then we'll talk about some qualifications here at the end. But myself, I'm Jim Orr, I'm a 21-year resident of Collin County. I live in Lucas. I'm your current trustee, I'm the Board Secretary, I'm also a candidate for reelection. So, thank you guys for putting this together for me. I grew up on a working farm in Wisconsin. It always liked to get up at 4:00 in the morning and take care of the livestock before you have to go in and spend the day at school. And that work ethic has really stuck with me through the rest of my life. I made it to Texas in 1985 on a full academic scholarship to Texas A&amp;M. I managed to get myself an electrical engineering degree, and then I went on and got an MBA with a focus on organizational behavior from Washington State. Most important thing that happened in college station is I met a young lady that actually agreed to marry me, got married two weeks after graduation. That's 30-plus years ago. We had three kids together, all three of whom gone through Collin College. My son has an associate's degree from there. And just in the classes that they didn't have to take at A&amp;M, saved my family more than $50,000 in educational costs. And that's the value that Collin College brings. And I think that should be an opportunity to all of our residents. And so, my wife and I take that very seriously, and we've donated $20,000, or actually more than $20,000 now, for scholarships for students. During my first run, there were two major things that came up continually. One was accessibility in terms of locations, because when the Frisco campus got started, there was nothing around the Frisco campus. And now, you've got people coming in that commutes for 45 minutes a month. And that's really not acceptable. And the campus was getting full, so what do you do? What you do is you do an expansion project to reach out to the rest of the citizens in my county. So, Salina turned up, returning up, Farmersville is up, Wiley is up. And that helps distribute the load and make sure we have geographical coverage for all of our citizens. And the other thing that came up was trades. There didn't used to be HVAC, or auto mechanics, or those kinds of things. That happened with the new tech center that's up on 121. To give you an example of working with and partnerships, the folks that enter the HVAC program have a partnership with a local company that when they graduate, they have a job when they walk out the door. And then, there's other examples in auto mechanics and that kind of thing. So, it's a tight partnership with the actual community in terms of working with everybody to bring out what the community actually needs. For myself, I'm the Senior Vice President of Business Development for a technology company. I have a team on five continents. I spent my entire career doing strategic development, capital budgeting, expense budgeting, financial planning. I can read a balance sheet, I know how to read financial statements. And that's what you need in this kind of position. This position is not where you go to get trained to be an executive with executive experience and understanding how to work at a board level. You come with that. And if you don't come with that, you're not going to meet the needs of the citizens. So, anyway, name is Jim Orr, running for Collin College Place Seven. I'd appreciate your vote.
Awesome, thank you.
And Mr. Orr is on the ballot with an opponent, which is Helen Chang.
Correct, correct. And I do want to just say very briefly, we did invite all candidates. Some were not able to attend for various reasons, and so, I just want to say, we did extend an invitation to all candidates in all of these races. So, just want to throw that little plug in there briefly as well.
All right, yeah, so let's go to place eight, and Mr. Collins, the incumbent, who's on the ballot with Misty Erby.
Thank you very much for allowing us to come in this evening. We appreciate it a whole lot. To tell you a little bit about my background, my previous public service included Plano City Council. Mayor approached me on there. I served on the Collin County Appraisal District Board of Directors, was Chair of that. I most recently served on the Collin County Economic Recovery Task Force, that the county judge named. And my most important job is that of member of the Board of Trustees of Collin College. We founded the college in 1985, and I was elected to the board at that time. I've had a chance to really be involved in all of the development of Collin College. I'll tell you a funny story. When we first sat down to do a master plan, our very first master plan, we drew three circles. In the middle, one circle, we put Plano. One, we put McKinney, the other one, we put Frisco. At that time, Frisco was basically a crossroads. It was just beginning to develop. And so, we then tried to pass a bond issue to build our first facility on the Frisco campus shortly after that. And the Plano didn't like that because they wanted us to drop the campus south of 121, not go to Frisco. So, we defeated the bond issue, and so, we decided then to move ahead with another way of funding the campus in Frisco. And I'll never forget, I had a friend call me really angry. He said, "We voted not to have the campus in Frisco." And I said, "No, it's not what you voted for. You voted not to fund it with a bond. We voted to have it in Frisco long before we had the election. We're going to have it in Frisco." So, that's what we did. We then came up with another funding scheme to develop the first building on our campus in Frisco. It was an interesting story, to say the least. My work experience is I was a corporate officer with E-Systems, a 4500 defense electronics company headquartered in Dallas. Left there and took early retirement and joined the faculty at Texas A&amp;M University Commerce. I've been a teacher in the Management Department, College of Business there since that time. I'm currently adjunct, teaching two classes of strategy with about 90 students in those two classes. My focus in teaching is business development and strategy. See, I guess my issue for, my push for the college is accessibility. I really believe that we need to try to have accessibility for every student in Collin County. So, that's what we've worked on for a long time. We started out with these three campuses that I mentioned a moment ago. Then, we moved to two campuses, new campuses last year, two campuses under construction right now, one in Salina, one in Farmersville. And we've just about got the entire county covered now from an accessibility standpoint. The northern part is the next step for us to go north. So, we'll be wrestling with that as we move forward from here. My name is Bob Collins, and I'm a candidate for trustee for Collin College Board of Trustees, place eight. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Collins, thank you. And again, he is on the ballot with Misty Erby.
Correct, and I appreciate you being right on time. I think you were measuring that down to the second. That was pretty good. I appreciate that. Well, at this time, we're going to go ahead and transition these two candidates out, and then we'll bring the two other candidates here into the room. So, if you just hang tight, you'll see us. We'll be muted as we do our transition, but just hang tight, and we'll be right back with you on our livestream. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
PNC, I was on the initial group that formed the Economic Development Corporation. And I served four years in the McKinney City Council. After that service, I then was appointed by then Governor Bush to the State Board of Mental Health and Mental Retardation. I served seven years on that, going to Austin two days, two days a month for seven years. And so, that entity had a $2 billion a year budget and 20,000 employees. That gave me a lot of opportunity with nine members on that board to learn how to work with group, a group, and how to negotiate municipal or government budgets.
Thank you. Something we talk about in Frisco a lot is the importance of partnerships and partnering, collaborating to make it a better place and a successful city. I'm curious, what is an instance where you personally have collaborated with somebody to make your community better or the college better? Andy?
Well, I mean partnerships are absolutely more than one person get a lot more done than a whole bunch. And so, I think that's kind of how boards work. You know, with the college, we are always looking for companies to collaborate with. And, and it's, I think it's a very big, good point that the college did. The city of Allen chose to participate in our public safety facility built in McKinney, but they contributed millions of dollars to that. And it's very rare that you have a municipality that contributes money outside, just be spent outside their city limits. We also had, Allen also participated in our technical campus that we built in there. We built an additional wing on that campus. But those things are where if you have a good idea and you don't care who gets credit for something, you can really accomplish great things.
Thank you. And same question to you.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. What's an example of a time that you've been able to partner or collaborate to make your community a better place?
Right now, in 2019, in the Wiley community, I've heard residents talk about, you know, certain celebrations. There's a Juneteenth celebration that we celebrate, when African Americans were free from slavery, finally. And they never had a celebration in Wiley, Texas. I took my own money, reserved the park, threw a party, fed everybody, hired a band, and we had a great time. The Wiley Police Department came out, and recently they called me and they want to do it again this year. So, I, I know how to partner with different avenues. Also, I have it to where I have ideas to where we can partner with other businesses and other government entities to also help to fight recidivism in the juvenile criminal justice system. Also, looking at non-traditional learners, the adults. I mean, there are a lot of different groups where we can partner with that people can really use Collin College more than what is being used now.
Thank you. My turn now?
It is.
It's my turn now?
Yes.
Okay. So, we've gone through a little bit of a crazy year, and I think higher education has definitely seen a little bit of a crazy happen over the last year. So, a lot of changes have been made in higher education through the pandemic and everything. What do you see the future of higher education looking like? What changes stay? What changes go?
I look at higher education being more streamlined. I look at leaders being proactive instead of reactive. I believe that if we always stay proactive, then when something happens, we don't have to react as much as we did with the pandemic. I think that, you know, we, we have egos that causes us to make decisions that put other people's lives in jeopardy. I see, you know, more online classes. I also see taking away certain vocational programs that are oversaturated. You know, you, you can, you can put a kid in a vocational program, but if that position or that job is oversaturated, it's going to be hard for them to find a job. We, we need to make sure we're focusing on the positions, the jobs of the future. When we go look at the statistics, you know, for the Department of Labor, see which jobs are going to be in demand in the future, five, 10 years ago, in, in the future. And then, we need to make sure that we have the educational process to address that.
Thank you. Andy, same question. Do you, would you like me to repeat it for you?
I, I think so. You want to know what it's going to look like in the future?
Future of higher, future of higher education? What does it look like post-pandemic?
First thing I can tell you, we don't put people in places. They choose to be what place they're in. You know, the college has had to be extremely flexible and nimble as the pandemic hit. We had virtual learning, but we have learned a tremendous amount about how to deliver virtually classes. And so, what we see now is offering that in a more dynamic way than we have in the past, but giving students the choice of where do you want to learn? There are some skills that can't really be taught virtually. Our nursing are very hands-on. Some of the vocational classes almost have to be done hands-on. And so, I think where we're going to see things in the future is trying to be much more, a little bit of everything for everybody and what they want.
So, kind of following up on that, if you could wave your magic wand and make anything happen, expand a program, do away with a program, and you had the choice to do that, what would you do?
Well, one of the things I'd really like to do is have Austin be a little bit more out of our business. You know, we're really lucky in that Collin College is supported by the taxpayers here. That gives us an ability to be more hands-on on what we are able to do. We don't have to go to Austin and request money to build buildings. We go to the taxpayers, just as we did a couple of years ago. They gave us $600 million. And out of that, we're opening four new campuses. We're also opening our IT department here right in Frisco. And so, if I really, we could be able to do something, I think that would be the main thing I'd like to see, is the ability to move forward with some stuff and have less obstruction from Austin.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stewart, if you had the magic wand, what is your one program that you would expand, do away with? What would you change?
I would first start with the board. I would change the way the board operates. Group think. I would eliminate the group think theory. I would also implement accountability, holding my fellow board members accountable. I'll also make sure that the president of the campus is held accountable. I would also do away with certain books that certain people, when they get hired or looking for employment at Collin College, have to read The Go-Getter. Different people can take that book different ways. So, there are things that are going on, not just in Austin. I want to sweep up and clean up what's going on at the college now. They did a great job as force business, but when we look at soft skills, they have done a poor job. And right now, they need to hold each other accountable and the president accountable so we can make Collin College excel through the 21st century.
So, I'm going to follow up on that, just very briefly. You said do away with the board, one.
No, I didn't say do away with the board. I said do away with group think on the board.
Okay. And then, the other part that I wanted to follow up on was accountability to the president. The president is accountable to the board as it is currently. So, how do you see that changing? The president is hired and fired by the board.
Well, the president hasn't, the president has been allowed to operate in a manner that violates the policies and procedures and rules that's already in place at Collin College. And the board has not held the president accountable for his actions. They actually praise him for what he has done. The president's actions have made it to where Collin College has been placed in the top 10 schools for free, for worst free speech. So, we have teachers that are being fired for no reason, great teachers. Their contracts have not been renewed. So...
Which is a common practice.
Which is a common practice, yes. But when you give a explanation or a reason, I could fire someone or not renew their contract without giving a reason because Texas is an at-will state. But once you give them a reason, now, you, and it's a wrong reason, you're not doing it for the right reasons, then now we have lawsuits. Now, we're paying more money for consequences than we are giving scholarships.
So, in the interest of sticking to the format, I, I'd like to give Mr. Harden a chance to respond to that as well with a minute response, if that's okay.
We're not spending more money on legal than we are scholarships. So, I know a lot of people think there's lots of problems. Collin College is not perfect, but it's very, very good. And I would tell you that there are some questions going on right now, but they're ongoing, and I legally am just not able to discuss them because of personnel issues. And so, I, I look people in the eye and say, I support the First Amendment, two sides here reissue. Let's wait until we see what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so we'll move on to our questions. We wanted to talk about four-year degrees at the Collin College level and your thoughts on the degrees that are currently offered. And should that be expanded, what would you like to see? Mr. Stewart, let me go first.
Well, currently, the, the programs that, the four-year programs that currently are at Collin College, you know, are some really great programs. You're looking at the nursing and agriculture and the, the cybersecurity programs. They're having to, to be able to expand it to five, to what, from three to five more programs. And I really want to see, again, degrees of programs where we can address employment issues of our future. You know, there's no reason for us to have certain programs that we're pushing on students or we're offering, and then they're not going to be able to be employed. Sometimes students need to be guided in a certain direction. You know, we're not going to place anybody anywhere, but we're going to help guide and we'll show them, you know, what they need to do. But if we have degrees that, once they get that degree and graduate, there's no job available for them, then they've wasted their time.
Okay. Mr. Harden, same question to you.
Well, I'm very proud that the Frisco Chamber was part of the group that helped us get the three, four-year degrees that we were authorized by the legislature. Right now, we have a degree in nursing and a degree in cybersecurity. We don't have one in agriculture, and we don't plan on it. Our third degree is probably going to be in construction management. Those were decided upon after deep discussion about what were we looking for that we could assist students that would get a job. Nursing is an incredible industry right now, as all healthcare is. And our nursing program is, is one of the first center of excellence in the state of Texas. Cybersecurity, anybody that has anything with computers understands that cybersecurity is really important. Construction and management here in North Texas is one that we have people looking for us every day to help with that. Right now, we hope that the legislature will give us two more, but we haven't picked those subject matters yet.
Thank you. We got a lot of good options. I'm going to, I'm going to throw a softball at them.
Okay.
Hopefully, it's a softball. We'll, we'll see how this goes. So, Mr. Harden, this is a quick, quick response. You don't need, hopefully, you don't need a full minute to respond to this one, but have you ever attended a board meeting prior to being elected? And if so, how many?
Yes. Before I was elected, I can't tell you. I've been on the board almost nine years. And so, I know probably two or three when different items were coming up before the board, that maybe when I was on the city council or something like that, that we were doing projects together. But my memory would probably tell you two or three before I was elected.
Okay. And Mr. Jacoby?
I would say about two. I've had two meetings. I've been coming to, I've came to two meetings this year.
Okay.
Just to understand what's been going on with the college and seeing all, you know, listen to people of other minds and people who, other people who've been affected by choices that have been made.
Gotcha. Softball? Pretty easy question?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to make sure. We threw a nice one at you, so...
Don't ask me something too far back.
Well, I think next, we'll put you in our chairs a little bit and let you ask the questions. So, Jacoby, is there a question you would like to ask of your opponent?
My question to Mr. Harden is, I, I really want to understand when the board is supposed to hold the president accountable for his actions. There have been some actions that he should have been held accountable. Wrong is wrong. And I don't understand why the board, and I need you to help me to understand and answer this, why you allow Mackens to violate policies and procedures of Collin College.
Mr. Harden, one minute response?
I'm not aware of any policies that Dr. Macken has violated. If there were, the board would certainly discuss it. We review Dr. Macken on a yearly basis, meet with him numerous times a month. He's done an excellent job while he's been here. And so, I, I really can't help you with that while we don't do it because I don't think we need to at this point in time.
Thank you. And now, at this time, we'll go ahead and, if you have a question for Mr. Stewart?
I don't have a question for him.
Okay.
Then we'll roll right into the closing. And you have two minutes close. Mr. Harden, you go first.
And the red sign means 30 seconds?
Correct.
Okay. That's the hardest question I got. Well, I appreciate, I really appreciate being here. This is a home game for me. You know, it took me 10 minutes to get here. And so, with all the events that we've been going to, it's very refreshing to do that. I would tell you that I really appreciate the Frisco Chamber and the business community and how they approach things. For my business in Frisco, I started it when I was here, and I've been very successful partly because of the Frisco Chamber. But also, the way that they worked with Collin College, they have been very supportive. Their legislative agenda has been very supportive of Collin College because I think the Chamber understands the value that a strong college is to their community. We are spending millions of dollars now on putting our IT center here in Frisco, which will be valuable to lots of students in the Frisco area. Also, our dual credit program is something that Frisco students avail themselves to so that they can graduate high school with up to two years' college credit. We also have the lowest tuition in the state of Texas. And so, I think Collin College is a great partner for the city of Frisco and Frisco Chamber and the Frisco business community. I'm very proud to be part of it. I'm the only member on the board from really this side of the, of the county. And so, I, I think it's very important that we don't have, we all run at large, but I'm very honored to represent Frisco and the whole county. We run at large. I think that's a great thing for how the board operates, and I would ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
And now, Jacoby Stewart, you're two-minute close.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Frisco Chamber for allowing me to be here. This is not in my backyard. It was over 45-minute drive coming from Wiley, Texas. And I hear how great the Frisco Chamber has been with Collin College, and that's great. And we want to make sure we foster that relationship towards the future. My main goal is focused around the students and making sure that the members of the Frisco Chamber, the businesses, have the brightest minds to help those companies excel in the 21st century. I currently believe that the current board has done a great job now on the business side of Collin College, and that's all I hear. The business is going to get done at Collin College, but there's another part of Collin College that needs to be addressed, and that's the soft skills. That's, that's helping students to change their social imagination. That's helping students to realize that they can take care of themselves and their families. You know, we want people to be able to not depend on the government and take a handout. You know, we hate, we hate the word giveaway or free. So, if we're going to put obstacles in people's way to cause them to fail, then what type of workers are we going to have in the future? America's one of the greatest countries. But our workforce and our educational system, it needs a lot of change. It needs to be updated. And we can't have people who've been on the board for 35 years. I mean, almost all my life. You know, we can't have people who stand by and allow other, other people and not hold them accountable and let them do things that are wrong and violate the policies and procedures and turn a blind eye.
Well, thank you both for your time.
Yes, and, and thank you for your time with all the forums. I know it's been quite the race running around, and we appreciate your presence and your time tonight. We are going to switch out now to the Frisco ISD races. So, if you watching at home will bear with us for just a minute, we will get the candidates transitioned out.
And before we do that, I do want to say just thank you again for putting your name out there, being a part of this process and running for office. I know it's, it's a, it's a big deal. And Mr. Harden, you've done it for nine years, so... And Jacoby, thank you so much for stepping up and being a part of it. I don't think our candidates thanked enough for putting their name out there. So, just want to say that. And with that, I'll go ahead, and we're going to go ahead and mute our microphones, and you'll see us, but we're going to be transitioning around here, so just hang tight, and we'll be right back with you. Thank y'all. Okay, welcome back. So, we've switched over now. We are in the Frisco ISD portion of the evening. And with us, we have John Clacy. Make sure I got the, the place number correct on this one. Got it wrong the last time. Play six, is that correct?
That's me.
Perfect, okay. So, with that, we're going to go ahead and give you three minutes. You are unopposed. You don't, you do not have an opponent in this race. So, you get three minutes to talk about how great the Frisco Chamber is. I mean, your platform, your platform, that's what it is.
It actually says that right here.
Yeah, it does, it does, yeah.
Well, I'm going to start with that. Chris, Crystal, thank you guys. Tony, appreciate you inviting me to, excuse me, participate tonight. And I thank the Frisco Chamber for, for doing this event again. It's always one of the best run of the cycle. It's also the first forum, the only forum that I've had to wear pants for this cycle, which is great. It's great to get out of the house, so thank you again for that. A little about me, I have been a Frisco resident for 20 years. My wife Melanie and I moved here back the same month the mall opened. And it was happenstance at the time. It was luck. My mom was a special education teacher for Frisco ISD at the time, and she said, you really need to come out and look at this community when you guys are trying to figure out where to live. So, we did. And fast forward to starting our family, we knew it was a place that we wanted to stay. So, mission number one was to stay within the school district and within the city. I have two daughters, sophomore in high school and a seventh grader in middle school in Frisco ISD. They started in kindergarten, and they've gone all the way through so far. And as I mentioned before, I had a family member who was a special education teacher. My sister was also a special education teacher for the district briefly before they started their family. So, I knew a little bit about Frisco ISD before even joining the board or starting our family. A bit about board service, this is my, completing my seventh year on the Frisco ISD Board of Trustees. This is the end of my second term, and thankfully, it's an honor to be given the chance to serve a third term for the residents of Frisco. We've had to overcome a lot over that period of time, and I'm very proud to have been a part of the team that did accomplish a lot of things. We've always had to focus on rapid growth, unprecedented growth. And for a long period of time, Frisco ISD was the fastest-growing in the state, if not the nation. And I'm proud that we, as a board and as a district, have maintained that student opportunity model, that small school model that we used to refer to it as. Over that time, it took buy-in by the community, continued support by the community, and a vision of a board moving in the same direction. You fast forward and you, you get into finances. We had to undergo an effort during my time on the board to go through a large education campaign with the community to help them understand exactly how school finance worked in the state of Texas. It was a multi-year effort, and it ended with a lot of fruit for the district. Buy-in, continued buy-in from the community and success down with the Texas Legislature to pass House Bill 3 in the '86 Texas Legislature. So, part of what we're working on today is to continue that promise in the '87, that we continue the, the House Bill 3 funding that was, was continued, and signs are good that it will continue. And then, lastly, COVID. Didn't see that one coming, but it has been something that has caused us to have to completely revamp all of the processes that we've had in place. And so, recovery from that over the course of the next year is going to be priority number one. Again, an honor to serve this school district. I'm very thankful and humbled to be given the chance to do it for a third term, and I really appreciate the Frisco Chamber for letting me come out and speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clacy. And thank you for coming out when you're unopposed and taking the time to do this. We really appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Very much, thank you. Well, with that, we're going to hold on tight for another quick transition. We're going to go ahead and mute our microphones, and we'll transition candidates around. And then, by magic of a few buttons, we'll have two new candidates in the room. So, if you hang tight, we'll be right back with you. Stay tuned.
All right.
Welcome back.
We're back now with our next race, place seven for Frisco ISD. And I think we should revisit the format just to make sure everybody remembers how this is going. So
I have a short memory, so we've got to stay on top of those things.
It's on the paper, but
There we go.
So the introductions for each candidate, you will have one minute each. And then as we get into the questions, you will have a minute for your responses. Now, at the end of our questions, we will give you the opportunity to ask each other a question. So if there's something we missed, or if you just want to have fun, it's up to you. You're prerogative. And then after that, you get to close any, tie up any loose ends as you wish. You get two minutes for the official closing.
Yep.
Anything I missed there, Chris?
I think we covered all the bullet points, at least the ones I wrote down. So we'll go from there.
Awesome.
So with that, we'll go ahead and get started with introductions?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and start off with Ms. Renee Arshambo.
That's it.
Got it. Okay. It's always a complicated one. So go ahead. You've got one minute for an introduction.
Well, thank you all so much for having us. Thanks to the Frisco Chamber. Ms. Brooks, I'm excited to be here with you tonight as well. My name is Renee Arshambo. I currently serve you all as the School Board Vice President for Frisco ISD. I was first elected in 2018. I have over 17 years of experience in higher education. I've worked for SMU for that entire time, which I'm a big proud Mustang, so I love SMU. I'm very active in the Frisco community, having served on the Frisco ISD Long Range Planning Committee, having served on the Frisco Education Foundation Advisory Board, the Frisco ISD Insight Class of 2018, and the Frisco Fast Packs Board of Directors. So I'm an active member of the Frisco Women's League as well. Currently serve as an ambassador level member of Frisco ISD's Council of PTAs. And I'm a volunteer with the City of Frisco. My husband Randy and I have been married for almost 20 years. And we have a daughter Zoe, who is a proud freshman at Wakeland and has been in FISD schools since she was in kindergarten. So I'm excited to be here tonight and answer your questions. I see the, I almost ran out of time.
All right.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, the card goes up when you have 15 seconds left. So just take your time. You've got a full minute.
Awesome. Thank you.
With that, Ms. Evelyn Brooks.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, Frisco Chamber. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to introduce myself. I've been a resident of Frisco for the past eight years. Along with my experience of working with children of all ages for most of my life, I've also had the privilege of teaching students how to analyze evidence, how to check the facts, how to think logically and critically before coming to the conclusion of a solution. With this in mind, the greatest takeaway I'd like for you to take away this evening is this. Education is more than just facts and ideas. It also includes character. It includes self-discipline, morals, and values. I would like to add this to the district, Frisco ISD, when taking into consideration how we educate our children.
All right. Thank you both. And yeah, we'll get started with a fairly easy question, but one that I think is kind of fun. So tell us who your favorite teacher was or most influential and why?
Oh, sure. That's easy. That's third grade. My teacher, Ms. Clemmons. Ms. Clemmons always seems like such a stern teacher. And no one ever wanted to have lunch with Ms. Clemmons. Unfortunately, one time I had to have lunch with her. And she took that as an opportunity to not scold me or punish me for misbehaving. But she took the time to get to know me. She shared her life experiences with me. And she says, perhaps, you know, we can get more acquainted over the summer. And the rest of the school year, my whole attitude changed because of her, because she took the time to share her heart with me. And I believe I was less of a problem in her class as well, thanks to her getting acquainted with me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Renee?
Yeah. So when I was in high school, I had a teacher, Dr. Rosemary Henry. And she has been influential in my life. I still keep up with her, even all these years later. She was the first woman that I ever knew that had a PhD. She is the one that taught me about women and leadership. She encouraged me to go to college and to, you know, get a master's degree and to keep working in education. So when I think back about someone that was influential that really changed the course of my life, Dr. Henry was that person for me. She showed me that women can be leaders and women can have a really powerful voice. And in the industry in education, that, you know, it's good for us to have a seat at that table. So she's really kind of been sort of in my ear from the time I was in high school until today. And so I'm grateful for that experience to have been with her for those four years.
Very good. Thank you both.
You're welcome.
Okay. So our next question kind of pertains to your resume, if you will.
Yeah, sure.
So what experience beyond your professional experience do you have that's prepared you for this role?
Yeah. So when I decided to run in 2018, you know, I came to the board with a lot of experience in higher education, but I really wanted to get to know Frisco ISD. I had a lot of experience with Dallas ISD. I was a mentor throughout a couple of high schools, served on some advisory boards with Dallas ISD. But I needed to know Frisco ISD because I think to run for this role, you have to understand the district that you were looking to serve. You have to understand the community, the culture of the district. And so I spent a lot of time on committees and commissions, serving on boards, working with teachers, understanding what's great about our district and what are areas that we can, you know, do better within. And so being on the Frisco Education Foundation Advisory Board, working with Frisco Fast Packs, working with Frisco ISD Long Range Planning Committee, all of that prepared me, coupled with my professional experience, to be able to come into this role and be able to serve the community that I understood deeply. So I think that's kind of what got me here. And then that preparation has helped me to be very successful, I think, in this role as well. I had very little downtime before we got started. The very first vote that we do as a board member is for our budget. And to be able to understand that, I think, is really important before you roll into this space.
Thank you. Ms. Brooks, same question. What experience beyond your professional experience has prepared you for the role you're seeking to serve on this board?
Sure. I think just remaining true to my role in my commitment to students and families that has, it's my DNA. I started a small school program, Challenging Edge Academy, where I serviced elite athlete students here in Frisco to accommodate their schedules. And through some of those experiences, I was able to take my best classroom practices and combine them with my practice of really being able to identify and individualize instruction for students, tutoring. I'm a tutor in the area. I provide SAT for students at the high school level. So I think just being engaged with the needs of students, with the needs of families, being engaged in volunteering in inner city, in the suburbs, and also having those teaching experiences. I serve on boards, giving advice as it pertains to youth, as it pertains to protecting them and giving them opportunities that are in the best interest of their future. Those are some of the experiences that have prepared me for this position.
Thank you.
Okay. Prior to seeking this office, how many Frisco ISD board meetings have you attended?
Prior to this, I had not attended any Frisco ISD board meetings. I've stayed engaged in other ways. However, once I did make up in my mind that this is something that I was going to pursue, I've spent countless hours of revisiting the ISD Board of Trustees meetings. I've made sure that I've gone to the meetings that I was able to attend since the beginning of the year. Furthermore, it's just been nice to also dig in to the aspects of the district, talking to teachers, talking to parents, talking to students of all ages, trying to get the feel and the DNA of the Frisco ISD community. So I'm just taking a lot of time to be a learner again and sit in the seat as a learner, doing what is required in order to understand more of the avenues of the FISD.
And I'm so sorry, I worded the question poorly because I should have been specific. How many meetings have you been to in person is what I should have asked.
Sure. So I've been to four meetings in person.
Four meetings in person. And prior to being elected, same question to you, Renee. How many meetings did you go to?
I'm sorry. Go ahead. I didn't understand that question. So before, oh, before being elected or before running?
Since she's the incumbent, before she was elected, how many meetings did she go to in preparation to seek this seat?
I attended about a year and a half worth of meetings. We have 11 a year. So I did about a year and a half prior to running for office.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
You skipped around on my question list.
Sorry.
I got to catch back up. Let's see. I like this one.
Hopefully you like this one.
So what K through 12 experience have you had that makes you passionate to serve the students of Frisco?
As a student?
Just any experience that you've had K through 12 that makes you passionate about what you do on the Board of Trustees?
You know, I think that I served before I moved to Frisco, I served as a mentor in Dallas ISD through my advocacy work with the state for public education and through my work at SMU as well. And seeing kids light up in the classroom when they understand something, when that light bulb goes off and they, this teacher has opened their world to something that was close to them before. I want that experience for every student. I want it for every student across the state. I want it for every student in Frisco ISD. And so to see those light bulb moments go off for our kids and they see that, wow, I just learned this really hard thing, or I can read, let me show you how I can do that now. Watching those young learners excel through those younger grades and then watching them as they progress through high school, if they go into college, or they go through a career path, or they go into the military, seeing that progression of a student. And because I've been in this world for a long time, I've seen students go from pre-K all the way into our graduate programs at SMU. So to watch that progression of a child that's just learning to read, all the way through being a very successful young adult, has just been an incredible experience to witness. And that's what keeps me going for Frisco ISD.
Thank you. And same similar question to you. What experience K through 12 has kind of sparked that passion for you to serve in this capacity for public education?
Certainly. I remember teaching a third grade student, Jessica. She was a delightful third grader. She came in cheerful all the time for school. And then there was one day I noticed a change in her disposition. And so as I pried a little bit further, I asked Jessica, you know, what was going on? So it came out that she was afraid of her babysitter. So she got to a point where she was just terrified at the end of the school day. So I remember getting in touch with her parents and I became her babysitter. So after school, she would sit with me. And I made sure she was with me until her parents got home. So the role of education for me is not a job. For me, it's ensuring that we pass the baton to the future leaders and decision makers of tomorrow with care, with intention, and definitely with selective curriculum and in social experiences within the school system. So from that moment on, I knew I was called and I was in the right place as an educator.
Thank you. Mr. Clacy mentioned during his time, the challenge presented by the pandemic and some of the changes that had to be made through that. And so if you're looking ahead post-pandemic, what do you think the future of public education at Frisco ISD will look like? What of those changes do you hope stick around and which do you think should go away?
Well, for me, I would definitely like to see less time spent in front of a Chromebook or in front of a computer. Definitely virtual learning doesn't look like it's going to go away anytime soon. But what it has presented is an opportunity to re-envision education, if you will, to re-envision the best practices for kids, not just isolating them inside of the classroom experience, not even inside of a, in back of a desk, if you will. So we're really imagining and re-envisioning what kind of future do we want our students to look like in the classroom. So it's a good challenge in that perspective. I would like to see the engagement again. I would like to see as small students who can come back to our classrooms. The connection is important in a least restrictive environment so that they can thrive and we can accelerate the progress of teaching them to get them back in on track to where they should be performing at this time.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I think that, you know, COVID has presented a lot of challenges for all students and for all teachers and staff. I think that we have a road to recovery, but I think we've already started that road, which I'm very pleased with. We're six weeks away from being at the end of our school year and we've not had to close a campus in Frisco ISD, which I am so proud of our staff and our teachers that have been able to accomplish that. That is a feat that very few districts have been able to accomplish. So I think that we have been on the right track through this pandemic. I think we will continue to stay on that track. I think learning loss and mental health concerns are going to be paramount next year as we move into recovery efforts further for our students and for our teachers. There's a mental health component that our teachers had to go through. So we need to come together as a community to help all of our students and all of our teachers and staff move into next year kind of with a fresh slate. And we don't know what that looks like yet. We're still working with the Legislature. We're in the middle of our 87th session right now. And so if they allow us to continue to do online learning, I'm sure there will be a component of that available. It's something we're advocating for. But we don't know what next year looks like, but we are advocating for Frisco ISD students to stay in Frisco ISD.
That perfectly tees up the next question on our list.
I was ready for it and then you said it. I was, ah, all right. Anyways, so we'll dive right into this next question then. There are multiple bills currently being discussed down in Austin related to online learning.
Yes.
Which ones are you watching? What concerns do you have and what are you excited about?
So I'm excited that it seems that we, at this point, our state reps are really, they're partnering with us as they do every cycle. They are passionate about making sure that our students are allowed to stay in Frisco ISD. There was some rumbling going on at the beginning of session that students that wanted to participate in online learning for next year might have to go through a state program. We want to keep our Frisco ISD kids here. All of our curriculum is written by Frisco ISD teachers. We know our kids and we want to be able to provide that education. Families moved here for that education. We have a promise to this community to give them what they've asked for, and that is a public education within Frisco ISD. So we are watching those bills very closely to make sure that we are advocating not only for our students, but also for the five and a half million public education students around the state. We want to make sure that all districts get to keep their kids because those kids and those families moved into those districts for very specific reasons. And so that's a big one that we're watching. I'm almost out of time. Well, there are others as well, safety and security. There are some mental health bills that we're watching that are really important, but all of those kind of work together. And so we're, okay, I'm out of time. There are like 320 bills that I'm watching daily. So there's a lot.
Okay.
And a minute does go fast.
It does. It does. So same question to you. There are multiple bills discussing online learning in Austin right now. What are the bills that you're watching? Which ones are you excited about? Which ones are you concerned about? And kind of discuss that a little bit.
Yes. Well, I'm definitely concerned about what the future of learning looks like in perspective of making sure family values are kept at the front end of our decision making. So of course accountability with the money that comes with making accommodations for students who are virtual learners. How will we improve the visual engagements of those students if we do provide the larger numbers that we currently have in the district where students are, 47% are virtual learners? How will we accelerate and offer rigorous competitive curriculum online using that feature? Also, I'm looking at some of the more conservative issues as well that are being presented at Legislative. I mean, I'm concerned about gender and just making sure that students are kept safe on campus, making sure that there's restrooms to accommodate students with gender differences, and just making sure that the quality of our education remains intact while still remaining true to our conservative values and making decisions that are in the best interest of our students.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you both. Yeah. So staying on the state level, when it comes to state testing and the STAR test, which my fourth grader just took for the first time.
Yes.
That's a very divisive subject. And there's been a lot of discussion. I'm curious your personal stance on state testing. Mrs. Brooks?
Certainly. State testing is definitely here to stay. It's something that we need. We need to assess where our students are. Does it need to be as complicated as it is? Probably not. I remember growing up, we had the Iowa exam. The Iowa exam is still a standardized test I still use. And we can compare students' ability with other students in different states around the nation. So I definitely think there are ways that we can still provide standardized assessment for our students, holding our students, our teachers accountable without the pressure that we're putting on teachers and parents and students at this time. With the standardized test, what we've kind of noticed with the STAR is teachers are teaching to the test. So we're kind of spending a lot of time where teachers should be using that time, teaching creatively, and just doing a great job at what they do as opposed to having the stress and the burden of so much counting or depending on the exam of the STAR. So I definitely think we need to talk about ways that we can make that a lot more feasible and less stressful for all parties involved.
So I do believe that our teachers teach in innovative ways and that they are creative. I don't agree that they teach the test. I have seen excellence in our classrooms that go well beyond the STAR test. Frisco ISD uses a lot of forms of formative assessments and of course exams. We are in the middle of creating a community-based accountability system right now that could be a partner accountability system to the STAR test. So I think the STAR's punitive measures are way too much for K-12. I don't think that the kids need to have the stress of a punitive test like the STAR in order to advance, in order to participate in extracurricular activities. And I don't believe it needs to be tied to funding. I mean, it's tied directly to the A through F ranking that the state gives for public schools and charter schools, although charter schools are held to an accountability measure that's a bit different from public schools. Our funding is tied to the STAR. Where charter schools, their funding is not quite tied to STAR results. So the punitive measures are something that I don't appreciate, but I do appreciate assessment. And I do think assessment is really important, just not in this form.
Perfect. We had a couple options. I'm going to go with that one. Cool. So as we look ahead to the 2021, 2022 school year.
Yes.
You touched on it a little bit earlier, but what do you expect to see in regards to kind of COVID protocols, masks, quarantine protocols, and testing procedures?
You know, throughout this entire pandemic, we have tried to work with our health partners, our community partners, our county and state partners. And there have been things that have come down from the federal level as well. So we have been working to provide the least restrictive environment that we can based on current health guidelines and guidance. And we have, again, we have been the only district that's not had to close a campus. So our protocols have worked. We just made some adjustments on Monday to reduce the amount of time that kids have to quarantine. We have some measures that we've put into place where students that are outside don't have to be masked anymore. And so there are things that we have been able to do along this timeline to make sure that our students and teachers are safe in our classrooms, to make sure that we're providing a safe work environment for our 8,000 employees. And I think that we'll continue to do that. I would love to see a mask optional environment for the fall. I support keeping our masks in place right now. I'm not interested in the next six weeks of school being filled with quarantine. I want our kids that want to be on our campuses to be able to stay on campuses. If we remove the masks right now, we will see up to 6,000 additional quarantines based on our members. So I'm not interested in that. I want to keep our kids on campus. So I'm not interested in that. I want to keep our kids on campus.
Same question to you, Ms. Brooks. What, looking ahead, what would you expect if you were elected? Kind of those protocols and procedures to look like when it comes to COVID-19?
Certainly. I would definitely look forward to in 2020, 2021, parents making more decisions that affect the safety of their students as well as the curriculum choices that students, that are chosen for our students to learn in. I believe that parents should be full partners with educators in educating their children, which means there needs to be more parent input. I would like to see masks removed as, and a choice for students. I believe in choice because it's a health concern and parents are more suitable to make the health decisions for their children. Something else I would like to see in 2021 is virtual as well as in-person books, textbooks. I understand that there are textbooks inside of the classroom. Most aren't used. For parents who are helping students, their children with homework help and assistance at home, it's very difficult to follow along with a student or their child when they don't have a book to follow along with. I think this is a very important concern, especially for virtual learners, especially our ESL learners, our students with learning or physical disabilities. Just helpful ways like this can help make 2021 a lot more successful than it is currently this year.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Well, we are closing out on time, so we want to make sure that you each get a chance to ask each other a question. So Renee, we'll let you go first.
Well, thank you all for having us. I know we're not to closing yet, but this has been a great forum. Mrs. Brooks, I think the question that I have for you, I know that you've lived in FISD for eight years. You've never chosen to enroll your children in Frisco ISD. You've chosen to homeschool. What could Frisco ISD do in order to have your children enroll in our district?
Well, you know what? That's a great question. I think that the fact that I've made the sacrifices to use the skills that I have, that I've acquired in the classroom in order to personally homeschool my children, shows the, not only the sacrifice, but the willing, my willingness to see all students succeed. What could the district do in order to allow me to change my mind? Actually, FISD has some programs and opportunities that I think are very good as far as providing a competitive education for students. I think the IB program is good. The pathways, career pathways is also an exceptional idea. Bright Academy is a beautiful idea to provide STEM and in-person hands-on curriculum for students. For me, I went a little bit beyond. We took a lot of extended field trips. So my children, we took our classroom outside of the four walls. We were able to travel and my children were able to experience some pretty cool experiences while staying true to our Christian values, which was also a biblical worldview I wanted to give to my children.
Thank you. And same opportunity for you, Ms. Brooks. You can ask your partner a question.
I just wanted to know, Mr. Archimbold, how could you encourage more community and parental involvement in some of the major decision processes such as curriculum? I know you have the committee, but a lot of times, parents aren't aware fully of what books are being read to in class. They're not really aware of really what books are being taught out of. So how can we make sure, how, what is in place to just make sure that parents actually feel like a partner with FISD?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, we have a lot of outreach efforts that we do as a district to our parents, to siblings as well, to make sure that siblings understand that there are really great resources for them, especially our younger siblings as they get ready to enter FISD. But with parents, we partner with parents through a variety of methods. And as far, I'll answer your direct question as far as the textbooks go. We have a curriculum and textbook preview that we do every year. It's open to the public. We put it out there. Families can come and look at our textbooks. It's something that I'm really proud of, that the district does. And so we, I guess we could encourage more parents to come and join in that effort. But we do have a lot of ways for parents to get involved, through committees, through commissions, through our different advocacy efforts. We take parents down to the Capitol during the 86th session through PTAs to help us, or we did through the 86th session. We're not going to be able to do it this time, but we take parents with us on a lot of those advocacy efforts. And so it's a big district and I think, you know, we communicate well, but you know, perhaps we could do a better job at letting people know that these resources are out there.
Thank you both. Want to go ahead and wrap it up? Do you have any other questions?
I don't if you don't.
I'm pretty tired. We've been at it for a little while. So I think with that, we'll go ahead and wrap it on up. I believe you opened, so we'll go ahead and start with you with the closing, right? Is that how we're doing this?
Sure.
Just want to make sure. Again, we've been at it for a little bit, so I apologize. But Ms. Brooks, you have two minutes to go ahead and close and we'll give you a 30-second warning.
Well, again, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. Something that I want everyone to know is that I'm not just here to win a place on the ISD Board of Trustees, but rather, I'm here to see that the way that we conduct education as teachers, as administrators, as parents, and taxpayers, that we are true to the standards of not only providing a competitive and challenging curriculum for our students, but also protecting what is being taught to our students, remaining true to the values of Frisco families. Frisco is a very strong city and we're strong because our families are strong. I would really like to see the Frisco ISD take more to consideration the high values and morals that we do instill in our students and our children at home. I would also like to be a part of being an initiative of involving parents in the learning process of their child while remaining true to the Texas State Education Code 4.01, where it states the mission and the purpose for educating students in public school education. And maybe the number one objective on that for the purpose and mission for education is that parents will be full partners with educators and the education of their children. We also want to make sure that we give our children a national heritage. Frisco was a beautiful melting pot and I think we can all appreciate that. It's also mindful, it's important for us to keep in mind that we're also instilling in our children to have an appreciation for their state as well as their national heritage. And so I would like to see the district remain true to the American way of life as we encompass all students excelling within our Frisco ISD. I urge you to consider me to serve. I'm an FISD Board of Trustees and I wish you all well. God bless. Frisco. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Archimbold, you get two minutes as well.
Thank you all so much for having us. This has been great. We're winding down forums, so this is the first time we've been together in a room together and it's been really nice to be with you. You know, I, when I first ran for the board in 2018, I always said I was gonna run, I was gonna be the candidate that ran for something. I was never gonna be a candidate that ran against something. And I think that that's something that I have held true to. I am for Frisco ISD. I'm for public education. I'm for our students and our teachers. I think we're heading in the right direction. My opponent has stated publicly that she believes FISD is heading in the wrong direction and I'm not that candidate. So I think you have a very, a very specific difference between the two of us. I believe that we're heading in the right direction. I believe that the covenant that we've made with the Frisco community is that we will provide excellence in education. I believe that we do that. I think our teachers and our staff are the best of the best. I look forward to continuing to push this district forward as we recover from COVID, as we continue to provide exceptional, robust curriculum to our students, the opportunities that we provide, the expansion of our campuses. We're a 72-campus district right now. We're growing. We expect 20,000 more students to come into Frisco ISD before we reach buildout. There's a lot of opportunity there and there's a lot that we have to manage as those students make Frisco ISD their home. I have been a measured leader and I continue to look forward to providing that leadership as we move forward. I humbly ask for your vote and I hope to be able to serve you all for the next three years. So thank you again for having us. Thank you for everyone that tuned in. And we look forward to seeing you guys out at the polls. Early voting starts April 19th.
Well, she caught my line. That's how I was gonna wrap this all up. She did it again. Anyways, anyways. Well, I appreciate everybody joining us today, all the candidates that came in earlier. And I want to thank both of you, just like I said earlier, thank you so much for putting your name out there. I don't think we thank our candidates enough. And thank you to our wonderful incumbents that continue to serve. Wish you both the best of luck in this election. Is there any final thoughts?
Well, I think, we'll say it again because it can't be said enough. April 19th, early voting. Day first is the election. And if you have friends who didn't catch the forum tonight, that's the good thing about having it online. You can share it and tell them to get informed and go vote. A shameless plug alert, but communityimpact.com. We also have Q and A's posted with all the candidates, so you can read it there for yourself as well.
And if you need any information on voting, go to friscochamber.com/vote. We have information on election sites, times, all that good stuff is on there. I believe all of the candidates who have joined us this evening also gave us a little bit of information about themselves. So if you want to read further, we have information about all the candidates on our website as well, so please feel free to check all that out. I think that's all we got going on.
I think so, yeah. Chris, thank you. This was great. Thanks for putting it together.
Yeah, thanks for, yeah, thanks for not beating me up too much for my first go-round at this, but I'm excited to do it again tomorrow.
That's right. Oh, that's right. We'll be back here tomorrow.
We'll be back again tomorrow, same time, same place, different day, with our Frisco City Council members. We've got place one and place three. I got all my numbers confused. I think that's right. We'll be back again tomorrow with that. Share this, like, share, subscribe, all that good stuff on YouTube. I had to throw that in there for Crystal.
It's my 10-year-old talking.
There you go. So thank you so much. We're gonna go ahead and conclude this evening and we'll be back again tomorrow.
Thank you. Good night.